Basically, they, Susan Pundance, have approached the council for their block terms. So they had to add on the additional I J K, which is on the report. And here's the diagram of documents to back that up. And also that they asked, because they need to vacate their existing premises, by the porting of the then, they request to store equipment in the building until the lease is signed. I mean, obviously, the first bit, I think, if the recommendation were to put the drop fees if already to go, basically, one of these bills sold for these additional things, remove of the one shower unit for disabled facilities, and the new entrance, and the vents to be installed at the rear. They said that to the additional work and of their own expense. So really, as long as this gets resolved, then drop fees can go out beside.
My only comment is, I haven't seen the lease, so I don't know what our standard terms for may do at the end of the lease e period. So how, what our policy is, it should be on us to decide whether we're happy with the arrangements to stay or whether we would like to return. And I just think what I'm saying is, okay. Okay, thank you.
If the council sort of, but what I'm proposing is enhancements for buildings.
Well, I do have concerns about storing things in our buildings, because what, we don't know what the things are. Are they flammable? Will our insurance cover it? If anything goes wrong, will other things are there? And if they're going to store them there, they've got the loan insurance, and then they should be paying some kind of storage fee.
Yes, I'm slightly concerned by the changes of heads of terms, because as we know, this has been cancelled twice. And we do have a six month rule, which I think is nonsense. But we agreed not to change any of the heads of terms that are meeting, what was it, last month? That was it. The council resolution is, we do not change any of the heads of terms. And now we're being asked this evening to make changes. So I just don't see the point of us making any resolution when it's going to be ignored. It was a very clear resolution. It was a very, very clear resolution of the council that we would not change the head of terms. And as for storage, I would assume that the tenant would be asking for a key to put these things in. And I don't think we should be down that road of handing over keys again before anything is signed or paid.
I guess I'll answer that a little bit further. I take advice from the client, but I believe the resolution was not to encourage an extra work of quantity. Not that the heads of terms wouldn't be changed, the clerk confirmed that otherwise. Secondly, again, they gained keys, they never had keys to the building.
No, I didn't say the deal, I said they shouldn't have.
They never had keys to the building. Am I correct on the resolution on it? But if it wasn't resolved, not to change it, resolved, not to, not to something they want to at the time.
There was lots of change.
Thank you, James. Yeah, well, I'm going to take issue actually, because new entrance to be created to the rear of the building doesn't enable access while the studio has been occupied. But according to this drawing, the new entrance is on the side of the building. Not the rear, it's at the side. Just a technical issue, but it's, if you're going to say it's on the rear, it needs to be at the rear, which is at the back, looking onto the park, not at the side, looking onto the car park. Because at the front, where the entrance is, this is the side. So surely, this is, don't take this the wrong way, James. This is being handled very badly, because this lady has messed us about quite a bit, in my opinion. She negotiated one thing, then changed her mind, wants to be passed that and come back to something else, came back to change events, and then wanted, didn't want to pay any rent for six months, and so on and so forth. And I think it's just, she's just been another really nightmare, sorry. Nightmare, nightmare.
Oh, standing on.
I didn't, so at the end of the day, I'm going to approve the entrance at the rear, because it's not at the rear at the time. It's inside.
So, Chairman, also, what I object to is the fact that these were only handed to us at the beginning of the meeting, and I've not had time to divulge any of the content. And surely, with that being pointed out to me now, that if they're going to alter the building for entrances or exits, don't they need planning permission? We can't sit here and say, knock all in the walls, that affects people, you know. I just don't, I don't think it's something we can approve. If we have to have planning permission for a door, surely we have to have planning permission for a door.
If the actual report does say, we should pay the permanent work at its expense, subject to paying any swing funding or building regulation consent. So what council has been asked is, where they're coming from, generally, is there's not a lot of point in asking for planning permission if council is not prepared to allow this right in the first place. I think they're doing this quite incredibly. I would disagree with David. What they've gone through is a fairly normal negotiating procedure. They make requests, I'm not suggesting we give them rent for any time, or come up and vote against it. But they're not to do that, but I can't blame them for asking. So they're not to discount anything, they're not to agree to it, which we didn't do. So I don't agree that it's, anyhow, please, can we speak to the, what we're actually requesting? Do we have any other comments, George, want to come in?
Yes, Chairman. I'm a bit fidgety about this whole proceedings, because this has cost the taxpayer of our town a lot of money. This building has not, we have had no money from them. They, we have had to pay N M D R or whatever, and electricity and all that sort of thing. This lady is manipulating this council, as far as I can see. I am sorry, but this should have been sorted out right at the beginning with a lease. She comes back, she goes away. It's costing the taxpayer too much money to negotiate something with this firm, or whatever it is. I'm sorry, it's beyond belief, Chairman.
First of all, council, council has resolved for this company to take over the building. Records will show that she's been trying to get, she's wanted to get in for several months. The holdup, any holdup, has been caused by council and by our solicitor in drawing up the draft lease. So I don't think it would be very fair to blame her, which is, she's been trying to the bit to get in for some considerable time. So, we can produce the evidence to support what I'm saying, that's not rubbish. We, 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 this, this is.
It's costing us too much money for all this crap, probably, or it's for the taxpayer.
Well, the taxpayers paid the rent, because two years ago, it was put on the precept, so.
The council books, please, please say.
And I think the public need to know that, that they're paying for it.
So it would not be fair to say that she's helping them, she's been trying to get in for some time, and the clerk has got the letters and the evidence to support them, so is that correct?
I slightly agree with that.
Just so we get the record straight.
I'm a little bit confused, not for the first time this year. So often, I've heard in this council over the last couple of years, that the council hasn't been renting the building, should be doing it to get money and income coming from it. I think that the type of procrastination, that's a nice word, the type of procrastination will put in blocks in the way of a prospective tenant of ours to actually generate some income, needs to stop. This, this council constantly seems to go around in circles, chasing its own tail, looking for excuses not to move forward. By leasing the building, it brings in a new business, it helps enhance that business, it makes use of a building which is currently empty. And I propose that we accept the recommendations, subject to ensuring that the building is adequately insured at the cost of this organisation, not ours, in the event that anything pays towards us burning the building down. I'm not sure, while we have to go to extremes, maybe we should read less Marvel comics and stick to generous.
I think it's on the recommendation, it does say, and they only say, except no law that it's the same key, not the same.
But it would be due diligence, Chairman, to make sure that the tenant going in actually has got their own insurance. Because if, if their items do cause a building to fail, we could, even though we have to insure the building, we could actually then be in breach, couldn't we? So we have to make sure they have that written. So the compelling sounds of the recommendations are accepted, so has this progressed forward?
Chairman, I will second it, but I will point out, I will point out the importance of having these documents before the meeting, because I don't even know what's on.
So then let me just, let me just put this in. So Adam has proposed that the paper disclaims with an addition that the tenants provides council with assurance that they have adequate insurance cover for their equipment whilst it's stored in our building.
Yes, that's, that's pretty good.
How do you say that?
For the, for the, I'm sorry, the building, for the building.
They need to ensure their, our building while they're stuck it. That's what he was saying about, that's what I meant. Not, not, yeah, that's about their equipment. If their equipment spurs the building down, they've got to have insurance to pay for the building.
No, but they can't insure our building, we need to just check with our insurer it's okay for them to use it.
I don't think Martin's actually right, actually. But we do have building insurance. So should it be, should it be, can I suggest that the caveat is that they, they've got insurance for their own equipment, because we're not insuring their equipment, and we check with our, subject to our insurers, accepting.
Well, actually, to make it even simpler, the caveat should be that no hazardous materials are stored in there, but any, otherwise, you're an idiot. So that would be, so proposal is, sorry, my amended proposal on the back of what you said there. Insurance, insurance should be in place, recommendations, but they shouldn't store any hazardous materials.
Okay, drop it in, are you second?
Can I, can I add something to that? I'll ask Adam if I may add it.
No, go on.
I just think that they should pay a nominal amount for storage, to be honest.
That can come as another proposal after this one is done, because otherwise we'd never get through the signature.
Has it been added to your?
No, because I don't want to do that.
Okay, let's, let's.
We're in a second vote, right, Chair?
Proposal, second vote.
Martin, you seconded it, it was a lot of time.
All those in favour?
I just want to let.
So are you four against?
I was four.
Four, so I was.
I'm not going to vote against them, I said.
Just two against.
Oh, three against.
Who, can we say against, against? Well, let's just, let's take the vote again, then. Those in favour?
Right, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Against?
Two.
Protestations.
Can I, can I say my opinion?
Yes, I want, I want to propose a pay a rent.
Just catch up, your rent.
I would, of course, if it's not ridiculous, someone might.
I'm going to suggest.
Right, and you want to make a proposal?
Yes, I want to propose that we charge some kind of nominal rent for the, for the use of storage, yes.
And you wish to make it so, what you did, what you did, but you just specified on the rent.
Oh, I, I have no idea.
A hundred pounds a month.
I don't know, I don't have a thing about.
Because you can pay more than that to open mental prize park.
You're not proposing an amount?
Well, I don't, I, you already know.
Please, can you please, Martin, not each for all?
I'm trying to help.
And are you proposing?
I have no idea, you have to pay for storage, Chairman, so I would suggest that somebody who knows that storage, Sally Anne knows that storage.
I just think I think you've got to come in, but you would.
Just wanted clarification on what is talking about. Are you saying that you want her to be able to store items in that building before she actually legally signs?
Council, council has just resolved to allow her to store her equipment in the building.
Before she's a legal term?
Before she is a legal term, yes. And can Chairman make a?
That's a good world thing.
Sally Anne, you want to come in?
I pay sixty-six pounds a month for my storage space at Open Enterprise. So that gives you an idea?
Yes, I can tell you that.
Which, which, why does it change?
So what is your proposal?
My proposal is that we, we charge a nominal amount.
Well, we need to say it.
I'm going to say it.
Because you're saying that.
Right, I propose seventy pounds a month, because we don't know how much stuff she's got, or anything, it could be masses of stuff. So I would say seventy pounds a month.
I'll second that.
All those in favour?
And it's plus B A T, isn't it?
Yes, it's a city.
Well, we have to get those things right.
So five, four, against, one, two, three, four.
It's a public.
Protestations. Resolution is that, caveat, in case.
Wait, how do you?
Well, it's because they're going to make.
But it's not quick.
If he doesn't pay seventy pounds a month, then I don't know if she's not going to pay the rent.
My, my, it's almost four to nine, and we've still got one, two, three, four, five, six, eight. Can we, please go back to meeting, we've still got six items.
No, Dennis, pardon.
Oh, we're going to do one, two choices, right, and I want to, I do, the first items we're extending or we're waiting, or we're going to have to extend the meeting.
Come for a break.
So I'm proposing that we extend the meeting.
I can't, I'm sorry, I just.
I'm proposing that we extend the meeting by thirty minutes, but something of the one.
Yes, right.
Okay, second, I think the next was the first one, all those in favour?
One, two, three, four, five.
Oh, four, you even.
Against?
Against, extending is this?
Yes, one, two, three, four, what was the, five, five, four.
Well, Dave, Dave, Dave just had to leave.
The reason is, that's another that's been hit since half past five, and I just think it's too long.
And you voted, how many's four?
I've got five down.
You can't count Dave, because he's left the room unfortunately.
So do you, I'd say that's fine, you did, Dave, Adam, sorry, do you take the vote?
Uh, I never voted against, I always voted against.
Five, four, then.
Who's against?
To extend.
Who's against, sorry, extend?
Now I need, right.
You're missing a councillor.
Five, four.
So that's.
Against.
Well, I believe I don't.
All right, let's just, the, 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 all those in favour of extending? The six, isn't it? One, two, three, you got that right?
Six.
Against?
Well, even if David was against, it's still carried.
I, I'm sorry, I actually have to be.
Okay, so we, we, we voted, and we're going to extend for thirty minutes. So we now want to generalize, and twelve, this is a parking review, this appendix, G one, two, and three. Alison, do you say this?
Um, it's, I've been advised by R C C, it's for the yellow line only, not the white, that we don't with the R C C.
Or on G one?
G one, it wasn't saying, it's the two, it was the same area. And it's for the yellow line, not, not white. And what they're asking for is O T C and for support. But on this one, it's a little large, they've asked for the expenditure, which we normally, oh, blue.
They're probably amazed, yeah.
That was right, it's true.
Or G, G, G one? Four, G, three, yes, it's.
It's, it has an art for any expenditure, I just want to know the support of, of, of O T C.
Oh, you don't have to talk. Chairman, if nobody else wants to debate this, I would like to move the papers with no financial support.
Yeah, I'd like to do, so you approve, yeah, support it? Support, no, 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 financial support.
You're proposing, we support, we support these papers with, with no financial support.
Yeah. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten.
I'm staying with. It's nine and two.
Like eight.
I picked in four.
Like eight, four, three, extension.
What?
Why haven't I got, you know, it's actually.
Next one then, firstly. That's first one, that one, that one, council, the appendix, H one, eight. I don't have this for sure, yeah, paper, would you please send me one?
Um, thank you, Chairman. Well, this, this paper's been bobbing around for nearly twelve months, I'm guessing.
Yeah.
Um, it's pretty straightforward, I know there's been some email tennis going backwards and forwards, not going to dwell on that, because, in essence, it's written down here, the council needs to do something about the path being cut close, this is a benefit, remember this is probably not aware. Originally, a quote came through at twenty-five thousand pounds. The council then wanted a bit more detail, so when we actually wrote to five approved installers or contractors, which R C C gave us, because they have to be approved, only one of those people came back, well, two people came back, one of the people said, we don't propose, they're too busy. The other one came back, which is the one that's on the table, which is Cowman's. Their price came through at about sixty-three odd thousand pounds, which was well over double the original quote. The reason for that was, and the council were made aware, and everybody seems to be in favour of this, was that Cowman's had quoted on concrete pate gings, as opposed to the previous one, which had been done on timber pate gings. Cowman said, you can substantially reduce the price of that sixty-three thousand by going to timber. We wouldn't always recommend it, because timber will ultimately fail and then whatever. But the council gave an indication that they would prefer concrete, because it will last longer, because you don't want to revisit this. However, because there was still any one quote on the table, and that was sixty odd thousand pounds, the council at a meeting said, resolved to go to tender. The clerk put it in the papers and some other locations, and we have had no interest shown whatsoever. And I promise that this will come back to council regardless. So we now have a situation where, when you told it all up, Martin did some research today, the realistic figure is going to be more like with the monumental digging and looking in holes, because it's a monumental, whatever it is, monument, that would be. It will probably be near us, was it seventy thousand, Martin?
Seventy seven thousand.
Seventy-seven thousand pounds. Um, it was also, there was questions about when we should get grants. At the end of the day, this council seems to be sitting on reserves, and I would never be able to go out for grants or money. We've got public money, we've got a public footpath that is in a state of fifty pair, we have health and safety issues, it's all there. The council made a decision, I won't be upset by any decision of the council. If they want to go out to look at it, if they want to set up a working group, if you want to get out, you're putting space on the ground.
Is there, and I, I remind the council as well, we've still got roughly fifty-six, I think what that makes, forty-one, six.
Fifty-six thousand five hundred.
Fifty-six thousand five hundred pounds unspent on the forks made one oh six, agreeing pavement. Okay, so just, just factor that into your deliberation.
Um, I just want to ask again, your question, you may not know the answer, so. Why is there a difference in the two types of finished service between the upper and the lower part? Is that, is there something we need to understand, or is it just shut up and leave it?
Can you come through the chair?
Sorry, sorry, on, on the, right, on the quote, the lower part and the upper part have slightly different specifications.
So it's separate specifications.
All of them.
One of the twenty nanometer surface, one of the thirty millimeter surface. I, I'm not a path expert, but I didn't understand why, and I didn't know if Adam enlightened me, or if the council.
I, I would, I would say that, working in the building industry, my only assumption is, because the upper path goes up a hill, that they appear to be using a thirty mil, the thirty mil indicates the size of aggregate. So that means it's going to be a maximum size tarmac act, but thirty mil in brown, whereas the lower one is going to be twenty mil. So the upper one might require a heavier duty, more arduous, give it more grip. And that would be the only reason I would think that they have done that. That could be clarified, I believe the price is not so substantial. So, but that's anything, I think it's because of, it goes up.
Um, I'm not going to be voting to support this, and it's nothing against the reflection of the efforts that Adam has put into it. Um, we are supposed to, even though we changed our stand in order to get best value for money for the taxpayer. Um, I cannot believe, and I think it's inappropriate to put an advert in the Rutland Times for a tarmac. Um, you know, it's, I do not believe in the present climate that nobody wants this job. And I, I don't feel that it's been tended for properly. I strongly object to the money being possibly used from the one oh six payment, because that clearly states it must be used for the open barley pot residence to attract them into our town. I cannot see how a tarmac pavement is going to achieve that. What I would like to see is, because we have another footpath in that part in poor, dangerous state, with bollards that were put in in two thousand and twelve, I believe, as a temporary measure, that this is referred to a working group that will contact trades, other councils, and the whole park is done. We reserve the twenty-five thousand that we charged the taxpayers to this year. And if they come back next year and we need more money, then we sort out raising more money for that. I'm, I'm not happy with this, this quote, I've been told there are typos. Well, if the man can't, it's the second quote which had typos, if you can't get his quotes right, then what sort of park are we going to have? That's all I'm going to say, it's, I, I can't support it, because we don't have free quotes. It's a huge amount of money, and we should not be, and we don't even know if we can, what budget it's coming from.
Do you realise you have made a service allegation?
What?
You've said, you said you want it tendered for properly.
But in my opinion, putting an advert for a tarmac of that quantity should not be put in the Rutland Times. It should be going to a trade magazine. There are websites, there are websites which the clerk previously knew about, Chairman, where councils can tender all of this work. I know the chairman's standing.
That, that means it's required.
Yes.
You, you, I'm going to give you a permit to attract workers.
No, because you took no action when this councillor three times this evening called me a liar.
If you.
I didn't counsel a liar. And, and, and I have not, it's my opinion that it has not been tendered for properly. Putting a notice in the notice board, I'm surprised we haven't had, like, an odd job man coming. It has not been advertised or tendered for properly. Where is the evidence? Where is the evidence of the tendering, Chairman?
Councillor Brooks, please, this is, make a note of that. Right.
Can I provide the evidence of the tendering?
All right, yes, thank you Chairman. What can I say? I mean, we, I think this is a job that is desperate to be done. We said this a couple of months ago, when it first came up.
Charles.
So, I, and, and I even attended a concert in, in the park, and we do seem to be using cuts close a lot, lot more, and I think it's more and more important now to attract more visitors to the park, to our events that the, our committee are putting on. I think the paths do need doing, we need better access, and this will be money well spent, and I can, I can understand the gals' fear that, that people are quoting. And I, I'll tell you why, I mean, I'm in the same industry, we, we, in the electrical industry, we are absolutely snowed under with work. Everybody in the construction industry are, are, just cannot, you can't get enough blokes to do the work, and you can't get it, you can't do the work quick enough. And people, people are saying, I can't do it, I just, because they won't quote the work that they know, if they get it, they can't do it. And that is the biggest problem, everybody is, and it has been like it for the last two years, everybody is snowed under, so, when we, I would have liked to see more, more, more quotes, um, but as we've seen many times on this authority, we've got to go out for tender and get prices for stuff, if we get one, we are grateful, and we are. Um, yes, it's a lot of money, I know it's a lot of money, but this is going to last us a fair few years, and it's something that we could preset, uh, year on year, and so it, so it's, and on, to put that money back, if we take it from Peter, we can give it back to Paul by budgeting a little bit next year, and a bit more the year after, and doing it that way. Um, I think it needs doing, and it needs doing while it's quiet during the, the winter months, if we can get it all done before the spring, and before the concerts start, I think would be a good idea, and I'd be supportive of it.
Can we just clear this? My mind, we've got how much money we could be budgeted for this? Twenty five. Twenty five, and we've got fifty six, so we've got, um, seventy, we've got eighty one thousand, five hundred pounds, so if we, if we weren't to commit the one oh six money, plus the budget we already agreed, that leaves us eighty one thousand pounds, which I believe is more than the total cost of what we've looked at. Well, I've been thinking, I was.
I, I, I thought that the twenty five thousand, part of that has been allocated out of that one oh six money anyway, so.
I was, I was.
But, all right, okay, but yeah, I mean, yes, fifty six and twenty five, this comes around.
Am I, am I correct, I mean, we budgeted twenty five thousand?
Yes.
We budgeted for twenty five, and then we minus money from that, that sixty thousand.
So if I'm correct, we've got, I'm correct, we've budgeted twenty five thousand, plus the fifty million, we've got eighty one thousand.
No, no, Chairman, we, we actually, we put in the budget because the preset was going to be too high, we took the twenty five thousand out of the one oh six money, which was sixty thousand. And then we've paid for half of the town centre manager as well, that's why the money went down.
Twenty six, right. It, it does sound on the paper, Jam, that the council allocated twenty five thousand pounds in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, and when we're talking to make a proposal, if it makes it easier, I, I'm quite happy to propose that for the next two years, we put a, a, a split amount.
I'm just, I'm picking up your point, but if I'm correct, I don't need to do that. It'd be budgeting twenty five thousand, plus the fifty six thousand, that's more than, more than enough.
Chairman, we can resolve it by getting a copy of the budget. Can, can you get a copy of the budget?
Well, well, you look now, wrong.
Because I, I believe we did pay a copy.
I, I agree with David's point, especially the安全性 and the durability of the pathway, sixty thousand is a lot of money, I grant, but, under present circumstances, critically and everything, it might be a lot more if we did it around, waiting for, you know, they could stick another ten thousand on it or something.
Two percent increase on January. I'm happy to get a minimum of that reduction, I think.
Thank you.
I draw on what Adam's saying and what both people are saying. I don't want this council to be sued because somebody has had an accident. Is anybody listening to this?
Yes, we are.
I wait till the chairman can.
I'm listening to you, I can hear you. I'm a little lost.
I do not want this council sued, it is not fit for purpose, you cannot get a wheelchair down there, we have debated this so long, and this is where we fall down time and time again, we go over it from square one, I say, whatever Adam has quoted, next, let me take this on with the job.
Okay, thank you. And just before I come to you, I would just clarify, yes, there is twenty five thousand pounds in the budget, so we do have eighty one and a half thousand.
Sorry, Chairman, I.
Thank you. I'm, I'm sort of disagreeing with some people, because I think we should go ahead with it definitely, because I don't find it, it's an exorbitant amount of money, because I've got a, a price for my little, my little drive at home, this is less than ten pounds, as much as we're going to try and reap our little drive at home, so I don't think it is expensive.
Sorry, Chairman, I think it's important, although it says twenty five thousand in the budget, I can remember sitting in this council chamber when we were setting the budget for this year, when we took and earmarked twenty five thousand pounds from the sixty thousand, and that was minus off the figure, because we were going to do a preset increase of something like eleven point five percent, and I really, and that's why I think we need to look at the original document before we, because I don't believe we have the money.
I, I suppose that we go ahead.
Is that correct? No, but there was a document, when you put it up on the thing, if you remember the thing, when you were preparing with copytatters.
This is a budget which was on.
Yeah, it's in the budget, but it, it was earmarked from the twenty, from the, from the one oh six money, I remember.
You said, you said. Chair, Chair, I'd like to try and help you out here, I would like to move an, an additional recommended proposal.
Okay.
On the bottom, is that, the, the, the money is, the extra money is taken out of reserves, and then replaced over the next two years in the preset.
That, that, that only applies if we haven't got enough money to save, so could you say, could you change that to if we require extra money?
So.
Let's do it.
At the end of the day, I mean, my, my focus, Chairman, was on getting the pass done, because the council were expressing a concern about the state of disrepair. The legwork is here, the, the, where money comes from, with the council, with the amount of money we have, to me, that's the little bit of, you know, let's spend it, let's not be, shouldn't be sitting on business.
No, it was earmarked, so this is another issue, we earmarked all over the country.
Councillor Brooks, please, this is.
I'm proposing.
We've got a proposal with an amendment to it, that if we haven't got sufficient funds in the budget, that we use reserves, and we claw that back over the next two years, which we rejected in preset, yeah, have you got that? You're happy with that?
Yes, I'm happy with that.
Do we have a second?
Well, originally, I was.
And I accept the amendment, I accept, I'm not.
Between David and Adam, so.
I accept the amendment.
I accept the amendment. So, proposal, are you seconding that?
I've accepted his alteration tonight.
Are you, are you seconding that?
Just say yes, just say yes.
Just say yes.
So this is to go ahead for the installation part, you can add, with the developer, a contractor over, up to eighty one thousand.
If we have that money.
If you don't.
Can, Chairman, can I ask the clerk, can I ask the clerk not to do it now, but I am convinced that I sat in this meeting, and that money was earmarked to reduce the preset, so it's very important, I'm not even against doing the part, I am concerned we don't have the money.
Well, we do.
Well, no, if we earmarked it from there, we might got eighty thousand.
I know, because at the moment, if people will please pick quiet for one moment, we might get the meeting over with, and in my mind, I'm not, and clerk is not clear what the proposal is, and that's not to be admitted, so if we can all concentrate and make sure the clerk has got the proposal, yeah, then we can vote on it, so, Alison, can you read out what you think the proposal is, please?
But it's the, the proposal says the report that the, for the installation of the, of the part, to appoint the contractor up to eighty one thousand, is that right, Adam?
Well, naturally, it's up to the, it's, I think the figure was worked out at seventy three thousand, we've actually calculated that we have potentially eighty one thousand, so.
It's just that, it's just the, I suppose it's the, it's just what the monument people can charge.
So, yes, so.
Because when I did, when I did the original thing on the agenda of sixty thousand, I didn't think or check whether they'd be doing it, watching every day.
The, I think what it is, the proposal is as put what's here, the only sticking point was, is that what David said, on the back of what initially was proposed by Adam, is that rather rely on the S Y six money, we use reserves if we need to, and if we have to claw it back, it's to over two years, and that's the only sticking point.
Okay, so we need, so we need, we need to get that word in the proposal.
Yes.
So now we'll read, read that out.
Um, that we're going to, um, we're going to award the, the contract to, to.
As per the.
Um, approve the expenditure, um, shall I put it up to eighty one thousand? Or approve the expenditure then, and, um, that it's taken out of reserve if we require any extra funding, um, that the reserve is taken over the next two years.
And that's, you're happy to second that, aren't you?
Yeah.
We're all, we're all quite clear on what we're voting on, all those in the paper.
Well done, Adam.
Against? I stand against everybody, isn't it? Thank you, love, it was important to, we're going on this circle a little bit, important to make sure we all understand what the proposal is.
Just to confirm, Chairman, the diligence that we've gone to, it was, it was at the council's request that we did go backwards and forward, so it has been, I don't know how much more we could have done.
No, no, I don't think, I don't think we're being criticized.
No, no, I know that.
I'm not trying to, I want to make quite sure everybody knew exactly what we're on voting for. Thank you for that, everybody. General item fourteen, conciliation regarding council and council. This was, I believe, the third from last meeting, and the, the minutes five to three seventeen, the bill is saying that we defer it until all the councillors are present, which we currently have, so it can, we now go ahead.
Yes. I'm going to just stay from the debate with stating the obvious, um, this has been an interesting, um, experience this evening for most of us, I'm not sure, um, a subject so emotive is probably wise again to be discussed today, and we're all quite, um, yeah, antsy with each other, um, so I'm going to seek that we defer it to a time put earlier on the agenda, so we can have a, a more rational thought process, um, because I'm not convinced that we are.
And could I also have an amendment, that, that the item when it comes back to council, that it's then.
Not, not going to, I must give everybody your. Just my suggestion.
Sorry, yes, um, I support everything councillor Woodley said there, because I'm not in a very good frame, moved over all the things that happened today, um, but I object to my name being constantly put there, it's conciliation for Open Town Council, and the monitor officer has told me that, and that is a problem for me, that it's constantly, yes, it has now been removed from the agenda, but it said there was a problem with councillor Brooks the last month on the notice board, it's unacceptable, so, when this comes back, because it is quite an emotive thing, we need the support of every member and staff for this, otherwise we don't do it, I think it should be an exempt item, so we can discuss it in an adult way in private, it's not a public matter, I don't believe.
Thank you, Chairman. I understand, when I, before I joined the council, you've spent this sort of summary before, on a similar exercise, and I just wonder whether spending eleven thousand pounds for VAT of taxpayers' money will actually reap any benefits, because, and don't take this the wrong way, Martin, we, we, we can say what we like, we can go to as many meetings as you like, you can draw up an action plan, if a member of the council, any member of the council decides they're going to throw the toys out the pram or whatever, or not shut up when you stand chairman, or, or, then you're not going to, but just, no matter how much conciliation you get, it ain't going to change anything.
Now it is.
And that's, and that's the main factor, because, and I don't, and I know, and I know it's a very emotive subject, because it, it's a council against a councillor, it's a councillor against the clerk, and clerk's got, is here all day, and so on and so forth, and I'm not saying anything against anybody, but I do not think eleven thousand pounds, you just, you just, you might, you might have gone, well, you might have put the money towards the path, because you won't give any other.
In my opinion.
No, that was a serious allegation made there, you said it was against the clerk, it's not against the clerk, it's against the council, no, that's important, because the clerk is sitting there.
What, what we're trying to get at is that we've got things against councillors, we've got things, um, problems with, with members, with, and the relationship with the clerk, and, and I just don't think eleven thousand pounds will do anyone's good, that's my opinion.
And, and Paul was before me, and Paul was before me.
All right, right, I absolutely one hundred percent agree with you, because there is no way that this type of conciliation is going to do anything to the atmosphere in this council, it means sorting out at our own level, and I think this working group, some people refuse to be on, but some people are going to be on, ready for the next meeting, is the way forward, and I absolutely think wasting eleven thousand plus that is ludicrous. It's a trend council must have.
But basically, I might be rotated and, and I'm, it's, it's a lot of money, thirty, it's, I think, eighteen days that works out seven hundred and thirty quid a day, which is nice working, you get it. Um, I, I think it would be better deferred, or perhaps just dropped, dropped for now, and try and work something out between ourselves, you know, there is a problem, and I think we can. Joyce, your next one, Commissioner.
Thank you, Jam, you ask yourself, is this valuable money? It is not, because it will not change a thing. And quite frankly, if we're going to defer it to next month, the month after, the month after, this is a, a unique night, because we're actually all here, and if, if one of us wasn't here, you can't debate it, so I'm sorry, let's just remember, valuable money, it will not change a single thing.
No, I hundred percent agree with that, when someone says I'm invisible before the meeting.
I'm very good, yeah. Um, I agree with Nick, that, I believe a cooling off period would be appropriate, partly because even this evening, unfortunately, councillor Brooks has demonstrated his contempt for standing orders in the council by refusing to abide by them. I believe that with a cooling off period, that if all councillors abide by our standing orders, regardless of whether they agree with them or not, they have been resolved to accept them as a council standing order, so the next time this comes to council, at least the councillors now have an opportunity, if it is deferred, to demonstrate, all of us have an opportunity to demonstrate by conducting ourselves appropriately, so when a councillor stands and talks, everybody listens, when a councillor is asked to abide by standing orders and put things in the right place, they should abide by it, if, if the councillor in question chooses to breach standing orders, that sends a message out that if he won't even abide by something as simple as by putting a camera on a table, which is three feet away, why will he then not then go, why will he, why will he abide by conciliation? So a cooling off period and an opportunity for all councillors to demonstrate that they can act.
But the only reason this rule was brought on.
He demonstrates that he can.
I know because the only reason that rule was brought in is because the council don't want me to record it. I'm happy to put that camera on there and then we've got a health and safety hazard with a cable across the room. But the whole business of that change of standing order is because it goes one for each recording. We spent three thousand pounds on that.
We.
I would go to abandon it.
Abandon it.
Abandon it.
We, can I, can I get a word in, chairman?
Sorry, he didn't hear.
We seek to have two opinions. One is to, the other one is to reject it. Okay? Agree with that?
Okay.
So my suggestion is then, we, do we have a proposal to, to, one, to reject it?
Defer first.
And secondly, to alter defer it. Who wishes to make a proposal?
Do you want to defer first? Defer?
Uh, yeah, I would like to propose to defer. Um, I've already stated.
To defer until.
Um, I, I quite like, excuse me, sorry for saying that. I mean, um, I like, uh, Mr. Laid, councillor Laid's suggestion that we have a demonstration that we can all act like adults. Um, and we need to have a bit of self-reflection. And I think we probably need about three months of all of us to behave slightly better in future, certainly in front of our public.
So are you sending to the votes?
Yes, if we agree, yeah, that would be excellent.
So your proposal is we defer making any decision on the proper meeting. Do you have a second of the vote? A second of the vote, so, okay, all those in favor?
One, two, three, four, five.
Those against?
One, two, three, four.
Five.
Five. And we get this cut in face.
This is a extension of it or?
Yeah, I'm abstaining because it's basically about me. It's not.
So can we have the alternative?
No, no, it's asking, no.
No, it's five order. That is my casting vote. I can see, I can see both sides of the argument. I think it would be best to defer it. If, if we vote now to reject it, that's tonight, except the order has been proposed, except everyone's been said that standing handed up a bit on it. If we reject it outright, what message does that put out to the people that the country was, was in, everybody's represent? What message does that put out to the local county council about us? And I think that puts out a pretty poor message. I think, again, I think that to make a decision tonight to, to accept or reject it, I totally take on board on what Nick has said. The meeting has not been very emotive. I'll take on board what Adam said. Yeah, it's a difficult meeting, it's a very difficult meeting to chair.
Wow.
So I think that it would be best if we did defer it to February. And that gives everyone the opportunity to reflect and to think about it. I think, I think that's the most mature way to move forward. So my casting vote is that we defer it to February.